29, 2024 to order at 6:30 PM. Disclosure of community interest in general nature thereof. And deputations, obligations, we have Jim Diamond. He's going to be discussing our official plan. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you. How are things in Cobalt tonight?
Snowy.
Yeah. Well, we need it. I'm pretty happy that I don't have a fairly new snow machine in my backyard. Haven't had much snow anywhere in Ontario, as far as I understand. So that's good. Tonight, I'm hoping that council will adopt the official plan that we wrote for the municipality almost two years ago. And I'll give you a little bit of background on it without giving you a whole planning lesson on official plans. But municipalities are supposed to update their official plans every 10 years now. It used to be every five. And your current official plan, which is rescinded actually, was written in 2009. And it was written at a time where we wrote official plans to make the province happy and not necessarily the municipality. But since your official plan has to be approved by the province, it had everything that the provincial government wanted to see in it at that time. And I was retained about four years ago to do a new official plan for the town of Cobalt and work closely with your staff there to do that. And in that process also said, well, by the way, you really should do a new zoning bylaw too. And because I love Northern Ontario and really liked being in Cobalt, I said I would do the same, that I would do both documents for the same price, pretty much. And we reached a stage where we had taken the official plan to the final public meeting. And typically, the process after the final public meeting would be that we would ship the official plan to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. And they would, in 90 days, which is what they're supposed to do, give us a bunch of comments on the official plan. And we would consider their comments. I would modify the plan, take it back to council at a meeting like this and say, here's all what the ministry wants us to do with the plan. I think most of it's okay, but I don't think you should do this, or I think you should do that. Council would agree or disagree and adopt an official plan. But what happened was after over a year, I believe it was 16 months, I finally talked to the Director of Municipal Affairs in Sudbury, who I know quite well. And she said, to be honest with you, we're not going to comment on it. So just have council adopt it the way it is. We've looked at it. We don't have any major problems with it. And in fact, we're pretty impressed that you put all that in 21 pages. And have council adopt the plan. And then we'll give you comments after the fact. Which is not the process I'm used to following, but because of short staff there. And what I'm told is a direction from the upper levels of government not to mess with municipal affairs in the province of Ontario. The Ministry of Municipal Affairs said, just take this plan and have council adopt it. So that's what we're here to do tonight. I will say just a couple of things about the official plan, and I'm not sure whether or not we want to do a planning 101 with council or not. But I'm wondering, Stephen, can I share my screen?
Yeah.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Great. So one of the things that was really important when we went through the process, I think we had four or five public meetings in this process. And I also met with a lot of people in Cobalt was to develop an official plan that really dealt with Cobalt and wasn't just simply reiterating provincial policy. We don't need to do that. We can just refer to what the province says in its own provincial policy statement. We don't need to copy it and put it in your official plan. And that's how we got an official plan that's 20 pages long rather than 100 pages long. And it was important to do that. I'm going to have to see if I can move this the way it should move it. And so what we did in the document itself was develop what we call land use strategy. And the first part of the strategy is community building to see what we can do from a planning perspective to bring Cobalt to life. And throughout the document, you will see many references to the community and the importance of community and the importance of community building. And that's really what we're trying to do. We're not trying to regulate development. We're trying to put some good guidelines together to say where development should happen and how it should occur. And we developed out of that eight, eight designations of land. I'm sorry, seven designations of land. Residential neighborhoods, and residential neighborhoods are neighborhoods. So they don't, they're not all residential uses in those neighborhoods. We've got local convenience stores. We've got schools. We've got institutional uses. The sort of things that makes up a typical residential neighborhood. We have commercial areas. Your current official plan or your previous one had two. We just put one in because we don't think you need two. We put employment areas, which is the more modern term for industrial. And we didn't think you needed two industrial designations, just one with some good guidelines in there. Open space and parks, obviously, to provide for community areas that can be used. Rural areas, which are the areas of the town that are outside of the urban service areas. And of course, we have to identify hazard areas, which are areas that are subject to flooding or mine tailings or contaminated land, as the case may be. And also natural areas. Those are the areas that should stay as natural areas within the municipality. Some people would call them environmental protection. I like the word natural areas because it just means just protecting the land. We could use it. We can use it for recreation, but the objective is to keep it as natural as possible. And the other main section of the plan deals with quality of life and community. Again, there's a consistent focus on on making Cobalt a desirable place to live. We have policies that encourage housing of all types and really make it a lot easier to build housing in Cobalt. Policies about the importance of recreation, cultural heritage, a little bit of stuff on urban design. We're not suggesting that that Cobalt be the hub of modern design, but things should be designed to reflect the historic character of Cobalt and the surrounding community. A lot of policies that encourage economic development and policies that deal with resiliency, which is a big word, obviously, today when we realize that again, we have the warmest year on record in Canada. So we have official plan schedules. This is the first time the municipalities had digital schedules, which is a huge improvement to, when I first got there, we couldn't find the schedules. And eventually we found them in a couple of different pieces. And so all of this is now in a digital format that your geographic information systems or GIS consultants can use. We've exchanged the information. The one thing that we did recently, and I've got my cursor here, was to change the train station property from industrial to to commercial, given the application that's before us now. The other schedule deals with transportation and servicing. We know where every pipe is in the ground in Cobalt now, and it's mapped and it shows it here. So if you're looking for places where there's services and people are looking for development opportunities, this is the map to look at. And it provides a good, a good reference for people who are interested in developing land. Oops, I've gone the wrong way on this now. I won't figure it out. Or I put the wrong schedule in. I've probably done that. Put the wrong schedule in. The third schedule it deals with hazard areas. And one of the things I wanted to say, natural areas and hazard areas. One of the things I wanted to say was that we've really, really made it a lot easier to develop in Cobalt, recognizing the mine hazards that are there and in effect. I'm going to stop presenting for a while and just speak to it if I can, Stephen. So, you know, one of the things that I recognized working in Cobalt is that the fact that the mine hazards are there is really has historically really hindered your ability to develop land. So much of the land in Cobalt was simply in your current official plan, you can't develop it because there's a potentially a mine hazard there. And the solution to that was a very, very expensive study. So if I wanted to build houses in Cobalt, I would be into $50,000 to $70,000 worth of studies before I could even determine whether or not I could build a house there. And I worked with the Ministry of Northern Development and Mines, or whatever their name is, this week to work out a system where we would say the land can be developed. First of all, yes, it can be developed. Second of all, we need to figure out how to get around the mining hazard. Rather than start off with the principle of you can't develop the land. And I think that that is kind of indicative of the policies that are in that official plan. They don't say I tried not to ever use the word prohibited or restricted in the document. Things are encouraged. There are tests that need to be met. But it's a far more positive document than what exists today in Cobalt and in most of your surrounding communities. So it's really, and again, I'll say again, it's written in plain language. It's fairly short. Even the province was impressed that we got it down to 21 pages. And fewer designations. And it's a really good document. What would happen if council adopts it tonight, and I hope that you do, is we'll ship it to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs with your approval. And they will undoubtedly come back in probably six months with some comments. I would suspect the comments will not be significant. And at that stage in the game, I'll come back to council again, maybe live. I do like it six months from now. It would be very nice to be there in June. And the, and talk to you about what the province would like you to change about the plan. But adopting it now and sending it to the province will also enable you to do certain things that you cannot no longer do because you don't have an official plan. And one example of that is that with the train station, we want to apply site plan control. And I've been working a lot on the train station property, and I've actually drafted a site plan agreement with them. But we can't actually enforce a site plan agreement until after you've adopted your official plan. So you need to adopt the official plan to do that. Technically, although it's rare for you folks, but you have the consent granting authority from the province. You can, you guys can create a lot by granting a consent. Well, in reality, you can't do that without an official plan either, but thankfully, there hasn't been any applications and we haven't had to had to deal with that. But there are enabling powers in the official plan that you need in order to develop your community to its greatest extent. The official plan also enables you to be eligible for certain grants, both at a provincial and a federal level. So it's important. You've got by about a year and a half without an official plan. But I would say now, from what we've learned from the experience that we've had, it's time to put one in place and take advantage of the the powers that it grants you under the Planning Act. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Counselor Hunter?
So there's still opportunity to make changes to this if there's something major that comes up, in other words?
Yeah, it is. And that's a great question. I always like to say to council, yeah, you're adopting an official plan, but the province is going to approve it. And if we found something in there that we really didn't like before the province approves it, we could just ask the province to change it for us before they approve it.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Starja?
Yeah, I said a question about the train station property here. It's, I think it says it's commercial in that section.
Correct. We changed the designation on it so that you can have the residential use in there without conflicting with the industrial policies in the official plan.
Residential is possible. It's good, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Let's don't push ahead.
Yeah. Getting off lucky tonight, Jim.
Well, that's good. You know, I'm really a retired guy, so I can't take too much stress. Stephen keeps on begging me not to actually hang up my skates for good. But I understand that you're hiring a planner, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Not the town, but.
Is there anything else or are we ready to? Ariel? Well, thank you very much, Jim. Appreciate all of this.
And I hope to be able to see you in June.
Okay, forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
For adoption of meeting agenda draft motion be resolved, the council approved the agenda, the committee as a whole meeting dated January 9, 2024, as presented. Need a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Anderson, seconded by Counselor Starja. Any discussion on the agenda? No? All in favor? Carrie? Staff reports, 5.1 Public Works, December 2023. Any comments, questions? verification? No. 5.2 Animal Control, November and December 2023. 5.3 Bylaw Enforcement, December 2023. Draft motion be resolved, the council accept the staff reports as presented. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper, Counselor Hughes. Any discussion on the reports? All in favor? Carrie? Items for council consideration, draft motion be resolved, the council review the items for council consideration as presented. Need a mover and a second. Counselor Anderson? Counselor Hughes? Okay, so any discussion? On any of the items for council consideration? I'll go through them, and if there's any discussion, you can put your hand up at that time. 6.1 Draft Bylaw 2024 dash XX to adopt an official plan? Counselor Hunter?
Can we just have staff like review and get the proper municipal boundary and then have it properly changed in the plan? So that zoning can be applied that has been missed in the past?
They're both in specific.
So how do you look? I hear you talking.
Oh, okay.
I know the approximate. I don't know where it.
Yeah.
Over here or something.
Okay. So.
I don't, I don't know where it goes out or how that works.
And our location of that?
Location of that is off north by, just up through the bridge, just right by the line there. Just that little area, right?
Yeah, I don't know exactly everything it encompasses.
Well, what I'll do is I will reach out to Jim Diamond after missing meeting. And then get him to grant, so it comes with the change to our next meeting there in a few weeks.
Okay. Anything else on that one? 6.2 Draft Bylaw 2024 XX Amendment Number 1 to Bylaw 2010-10 Financial Assistance Policy. There is a staff report. Are we? These paths thus considered?
Considered a direction. May I speak on this one?
Yeah.
This one here changes the date from September 1st, which staff has determined to be too early in the year for the nonprofit entities until December 1st. And closer to the year end, they know better status of where they are financially, as well preparation for us on budget.
Hey, 6.3, any questions on that? No. All right, 6.3 Draft.
That's the line of credit? Says it.
Well, I haven't read it yet. Draft Bylaw 2024 XX Municipal Line of Credit Staff Report 2024-01-09 will do, and hang on.
Yeah, this is a yearly bylaw that comes by beginning of every year. So it's just preparation that we have to go into our operating line of credit within the year. The bylaw has already been passed. Every January, it's posted. Yeah, I've seen, what is it, 25 bucks a month or something, just to have it open? It's like, and we haven't, haven't used it in years past, so is it 350 bucks or 300 bucks we could save? Like, how long does it take to get a line of credit now or at the bank and you get one?
What?
I want to say, if the line of credit is assessed, these rules, I would be able to, I get an email every day for one.
Yeah, but for little ones, not for big ones.
Okay, so it's definitely worth it, eh?
If we need it, yes.
Okay.
That's something that we should probably keep in our back pocket.
I like to try to say 300 every time we.
Okay, anything else? No. 6.4 Draft Bylaw 2024-XX Interim Tax Levying Staff Report 2024-01-09-03. Any questions on that one?
Again, this is one every year, the interim tax levy bylaw. And here it is stating about the change of February, into February 2024 and April 30, 2024.
Sorry, 6.5 Surplus Lot, Lots Bit, 14 and 16 Lang Street Lots. There is a staff report, 2024-01-09-04. And that was. Okay, you want to speak on that one?
Thank you, Worship. We had bidder over both of these properties. The 15 Lang Street, 12,000, and the 16 Lang Street, 10,000. Those were the amounts that were requested when it was advertised. They would only proceed with purchase if they've got both properties, not one or the other, both of them. So that's why they put in a bid again for the 22,000, so council's direction if how to proceed.
Just wondering where those lots are specifically?
Those lots specifically are right behind the old CIBC building.
Okay.
Yeah, the two adjacent lots right there.
Where the pool room and the other spot used to be. Where the pool room and the other.
Used to be.
I guess the other question would be, do we have any kind of a quota on that that they will produce for bill or whatever you're going to do?
Never went into too much detail. Was just inquiring what our bylaws were for zoning bylaw, and they were inquiring about it. So I know there is a push from the board government for housing, things like that. And they are fully aware it has to be commercial too, with downtown area at the front of the building as well. So they just inquired a little bit on it, looking at their zoning bylaws, so.
But we don't have anything in place that forces somebody to build within a certain amount of time or to develop it.
It's an idea that's been kicking around for a while. I don't think it probably should. We do have some lots that have been purchased. And I think more because the people didn't want to build in block interview than for any other reason. And we make very low taxes and come off of them.
Some people also purchase lots so that they have some parking as well, because as we know, parking and stone renewables are a real challenge at times in Cobalt.
One other thing, Worship, too, is these lots are serviceable, which is very attractive for anyone looking at purchasing.
Okay, so do we want to give direction to staff on accepting incentives? Or not accepting, how's council feel? Accepting? Accepting? Yeah. Definitely directions to accept. Hey, Cobalt Public Library Board, request for two new members? Go ahead.
With the Cobalt Public Library Board, as if approved by council, I would like to have this advertised as soon as possible to get some interest in it, and whoever may want to apply for the two vacant positions.
You okay with that? Any direction to staff? Go ahead and advertise for the positions?
Thank you.
Okay, review of Bylaw 2013, sorry, 6.7 Review, Bylaw 2013-037 Regulate the Keeping of Animals and Registration of Dogs and Cats Within the Town of Cobalt. Any questions on that? Counselor Cooper?
Are we going to give this a full review?
Yes.
Okay, or is there going to be a committee set up or what's the?
Um, I think we can start with a full review. I know that we are going to put on the agenda next week, we're going to be giving a service review as well.
Okay.
So this gives all the counselors time to review the bylaw and email your comments or suggestions to the trustee at the town office. And then we'll decide next week how we want to proceed, whether we want to do a committee. I'm thinking probably a committee is a good idea. An ad hoc committee. Because I think this is something that a couple of members in the public should probably be involved in as well. I just don't want to overburden everybody because we've got other advisory groups on the go right now. And I'd like to see some of that get tied up. And we've also asked the staff for a lot of different reports. And the first quarter of the year is extremely busy. So we got to also keep that in mind. Okay? But this is something I think that's long overdue. And it definitely needs to be given a good look at.
Worship, I know you were paying less for him to do that. If you keep any of your notes on the things that you wanted to.
They're all here. They're burned in my brain. They haven't vacated, unfortunately. I need to vacate them so I have room to burn other things. Coleman Township, 6.8 Coleman Township, Letter of Support, Conservation Officer Reclassification. Yep, go ahead.
What the Coleman Township is looking for support was for the conservation officers in our area. We have a vast area here and very little conservation officers actually patrolling it. What they want to do is go to the ministry, have it increased for this area for large, vast area that we have here. So to layer support for that.
Want direction on it?
What are they? Are they wanting the ministry to hire more or just have the existing ones patrol more? Like, do we realize how this might affect us cost-wise?
They do want more officers here for the area that needs to be patrolled because it's so large compared to other areas of Ontario. So they were looking for support with that. So what they want it to be is reclassified as enforcement officers and be compensated fairly also.
How do we pay for that now? Because if we were asking for, let's say, more police officers, I know that our policing fee would like. So.
But that would be through taxation, through that. The OPP, no.
That's different, so.
But for it be a ministry.
Okay, so we don't get charged like the health unit and everything else, but that's not.
Okay. So direction of council, are we okay to do? Letter of support? Yep. Okay, 6.9 Town of Aurora, Letter of Support for the Homelessness Crisis?
Town of Aurora, going to the ministry, and this is not just for Town of Aurora, this is through the province that we are now running into a homelessness crisis. As everyone has seen on the news especially. So this is going to the ministry asking for assistance now. asking for assistance now, because it is a increasing problem.
I have no problem supporting them. They have the solution to ending it, so.
So here. Yes, can I just go back and ask a question about one of these, please?
Yeah.
Is that fine? I just said five, the of the two properties.
Yeah.
Now, um, you know, I'm not up on everything here, but uh, is there any, like, we don't have a lot of land, Cobalt, we all know that. So land is kind of a premium in town. Is there any chance that the town could apply for any of these subsidies and these money and the grants that are for house building and take it on themselves and build their own, maybe an old six pence or build something there on that property rather than give it to somebody else, so we could recoup taxes and income?
I would have to check with funders and see what's, because they have a lot of money for, you know, buildings and housing. It might be worth looking into, maybe before we just sign it off, give it to somebody else.
You mean like the Lang Street property?
Yeah, that's big chunk of land. I'm looking at that land, like the six pence would sit there perfectly.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, we've already put it up for sale, and we've already accepted bids on it. And council approved that, so I think at this point, we can't really backtrack on that.
Should have asked her. I didn't think we were both on that right now.
If you want to talk about the cost of building and returns and stuff, we could have a coffee sometime.
Okay, sure.
Okay, there's one little aspect to the town. Uh, deciding to build something and go for government grants on it to help it out. Um, way back, uh, we took uh, did a building design, a senior building design for the uh, along North Street, my end of town. And had the building plans and everything. Oh, Tina and I, we um, did a lot of work on it. We had it all ready to go and all ready to apply for funding for it. And then discovered if we applied for funding, we didn't decide what happened to it afterwards and who lived in it. Um, because we took funding from any government agency, uh, it would become a D S A P building. So if we decided to build some houses and we went for any of that government funding, then filling those houses, whoever got to to rent them would be through D S A P, not us. Unless, you know, by some miracle, some year that changes, but that's why those plans for twelve or fourteen units for handicap senior are sitting on the shelf downstairs.
Yeah, um, I do know that the government is uh, put a real push on um, increase in housing.
Mm-hmm.
And they are allowing some development like that by municipalities. Um, unfortunately, there is a lot of red tape and it's a lot of work and.
It takes a lot of cash.
Yeah, yeah. So they may be giving you money, but you have to also have your own money to put into it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just thinking four years down the road, that's all.
Yeah, well, if you can find some uh, cash reserves somewhere, that's definitely something we could look into.
And even more to what our role is, is to encourage a developer to buy it, and when he applies for whatever his rezoning is and builds something, then we get that tax revenue. And ultimately, that's what we get for many years down the road.
Mm-hmm.
And then let him take the risk and.
I I don't think we want to be landlords anymore than we already are.
No. As our addicts.
That's my personal opinion. Um, okay, so uh, anyway, back to six point nine, the Town of Aurora, letter of support for homelessness. Are we okay with providing?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, so all in favor? Eric? Items for council information, seven point one Roar Engineering Report, classic theater roof repair. There was a staff report with it on the classic theater roof repair and the roar engineering report. So draft motion be resolved, the council accept the items for council information as presented. I need a mover and a secondary on this one. Councilor Anderson, Councilor Cooper, any discussion?
Thank you, your worship. Um, before anything comes out outside of the insurance uh, coverage, uh, we are still awaiting quotes and costs before, don't want to put the cart in front of the horse here or anything. So we're just going through the process, getting along with that normal, and just now waiting for the quotes for this. Then we will look at options, look at different avenues of funding, funders out there, so.
Councilor Cooper?
Have you looked at the foundation quotes as well, or?
We are, the engineer right now is doing an overhaul of everything and will vote everything from A to Z.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Okay.
Do you have an idea at all of how much the insurance is going to cover all those things?
Uh, well, the insurance is going to cover what the impact was on that portion of the roof. That would be it, but I am in discussions with the uh, Ontario area and Northern Ontario carriage as well, and discussing what grants are available out there, and there are some, so I will be proceeding with that.
And I was just wondering if the structure failure because of the stable beams upstairs not being well supported anymore. Uh, if that is causing this problem down in the basement foundation as well and. Because I don't see a lot of money, sense putting a lot of money into a building if foundations fit, yeah.
Councilor Hunter?
Um, does the Classic Theater Corporation qualify for applying for any grants themselves? I mean, that's one of the reasons we originally leased the Golden Age Club to the Golden Age, because they were able to qualify for grants. And they succeeded in maintaining their building, so like, are they able?
Well, the those discussions have not yet begun.
And I believe this might be a little different. These are structural issues.
Yeah.
Well, though, they maintained their building, I mean.
Yeah.
New roof and siding, et cetera. This is even more important, like.
So right now, I'm just awaiting some quotations and discussions with the Roar Engineering and our insurance company.
Mm-hmm.
See for that. I will keep uh, council updated as we move forward with this.
We'll probably have some decisions to be made down here. Okay, so any other? All in favor? Carrie? Um, eight unfinished business, there is none. Nine new business, nine point one mayor's report. Um, I received an email or received the office from seeking email from St. Pat's. Uh, they, on Tuesday, next Tuesday, the sixteenth, they're going to be doing uh, the McMichael Gallery, uh, it's extended virtually at St. Pat's, Cobalt a Mining Town and the Canadian Imagination. And that's going to begin at nine until ten, and then the students are getting a virtual tour of the exhibition with the staff. Uh, for McMichael or McMichael Gallery. And then the staff from the Tenshing Art Gallery is going to be on hand all day to be working on art projects with the students to help celebrate Cobalt's history and its special character. Uh, I'm going to attend for an hour, an hour and a half in the afternoon. I'm putting it out to council to see if any other councillors would like to attend. Um, I think it would be great if we could get a few that would. Uh, Tuesday the sixteenth, it's all day. Uh, beginning at nine, they're going to do the exhibition. And then they're going to be working on art in the afternoon, and I think they're they're also asking if maybe we can talk about coming up with some way of showing some of their art in the municipal office.
Mm-hmm.
For the day. So um, if you could get back to Steve to let him know if you can attend and what time you could attend. So that we can stagger it throughout today to give a good representation at council uh, for this, that would be great. If we overlap a little, will we overlap? Like, more than anything, the interest from council would go a long way. Okay?
So nine to ten is the um, the video.
Fun part.
Yeah, I can have Steve forward the email to all of council.
Yeah.
So that you know what the breakdown for the day actually is, and then you can let him know, reply back to his email individually, please.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. And I know there was something else, but because I've got other stuff burned in my brain, I've run out of room and I can't remember. Uh, okay, so ten closed meetings, there are none. Eleven uh, business arising from closed meeting, there is none. And I'm going to back up to my mayor's report. And the other thing I did want to speak on is I want to thank Are You Hungries for all the work they did for the Christmas dinner.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and obviously, it's growing each year because they ran out of meals this year.
They did not, sure as well.
They ran out earlier this year, a lot earlier. Um, and next year, I'm hoping to, maybe if we can get a couple of us together to assist. I can drive, somebody wants to sit in the car and deliver to some of the Cobalt residents, and I think that that would be something for us to mull over for next year. Okay, so now I'm going to go back down to number twelve. Adjournment, draft motion be resolved, that the committee of the whole meeting of council be adjourned at seven ten P M. I need a mover and a secondary. Councilor Wilcox and Councilor Cooper, all in favor? Carrie?
You have to leave these, right?
The uh, official bylaw?
Go to official plan.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, the official plan, yeah, leave it uh, so that they don't have to print it again at a meeting.
They'll want some back.